Keep it moving along.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call the Village of Oregon Board to Order today, is today? June 17th, 5:00 PM. Can I get a roll call, please?
Bashan.
Here.
Higgins.
Here.
Kirchdorfer.
Here.
Manke.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
And McDaniel and Van Kampen are excused.
Okay. All right, next on the agenda, number three is approval of June 3, 2024 Village Board Meeting Minutes, if correct, and correction of mistakes, if any. Can I get a motion?
Can I make a motion?
Tom and Tim? Okay. And then, any corrections or questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we're good. Number four is public appearances, comments, and communications. Items are for discussion and/or possible action. For A is public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the village board, including items both on and off the agenda. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to talk to us? Okay, seeing none, move on to 4B. 2023 Annual Financial Audit. One is presentation of financial statements with independent auditors report for the year ending December 31, 2023, from the village's independent financial auditor, Johnson, Block, and Company. And we have Tara Bast here. Do you have a presentation, or are you just available for questions?
That is completely up to the board. If the board wants me to go through this presentation, or if you just want to ask questions.
Okay, I think we should probably, if you want to kind of walk us through, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, no problem. So there are a few documents in your board packets. What we've got up on the screen there is the financial statement overview report. But then also, what we're issuing in the end is the full audit report, as well as our annual communication packet. So I'm going to go through the financial overview summary and just kind of hit some of the highlights and detail the contents of the audit report, and then we can open it up if there's any specific questions. So if you look at this summary, on page one, it just gives you a brief overview of the content of the audit report. The first thing in the report is our, after the table of contents, is contents is our opinion letter. So as auditors, we are issuing an opinion on the village's financial statements. And our opinion is whether or not the financial statements are free of any material misstatements and presented in accordance with the applicable accounting standards that are required for a clean opinion. So our opinion is unmodified, which means it's clean financial statement opinion, so we don't feel that there's any errors or issues in them. After our report, you've got a few sets of financial statements. Government-wide set of financial statements is a consolidated set of financial statements on the full accrual basis of accounting. So all of your governmental funds are consolidated into the governmental activities. All of your business type, your water and sewer funds are consolidated into the business type column in those financial statements. And again, those are on full accrual, so they issue or they report assets and liabilities on the balance sheet, so long-term assets, long-term liabilities. Then the next set of financial statements is your fund financial statements. The governmental funds, the village has several governmental funds that are made up of the general fund, the main operating fund, as well as special revenue funds, capital project funds, debt service funds. And then you also have your TIF districts, which are included in those types of funds as well. These sets of financial statements are presented on what's called the modified accrual basis of accounting. So the financial activity that runs through them is on a short-term financial basis. It's current revenues, current resources. So you're not going to see the reporting of the long-term financial liabilities or long-term assets reported in those funds. It's all more current financial resource-based. And then you have, after the governmental funds, is your water and sewer individual utility fund statements. The largest portion of the report is the notes to the financial statements. They contain a section of significant accounting policies, as well as additional footnote disclosures that are required and help support the financial statements themselves and give a little more detail. Then the back section, required supplementary information and other supplementary information. That is made up of a general fund budget to actual schedule, and then some required schedules under accounting standards for the village's participation in the Wisconsin retirement system, as well as the life insurance, the state life insurance program. So those are considered pensions and OPEP or other post-employment benefit plans that have some additional schedule reporting that's required. And then also in the back is a combining schedule, so it has additional detail on all the various funds the village maintains. Each of the funds are self-balancing funds with their own assets, liabilities, revenues, and expenditures. And then new this year, let's see, it's on the, the last bullet point on page one is the single audit report. So something that was new this year, the village, for the first time since our firm has been auditing the village, spent over $750,000 in federal funding, which requires a compliance audit, so an audit of federal programs. So really, two federal programs that the village had spending on that kicked in this requirement was the use of the ARPA funding for some projects. And then as well as there was the loan through the, I think it was USDA program for the library. So those two sources of funding were considered federal dollars that required this additional compliance audit. So we didn't have any issues with that compliance audit. And it's just something additional that gets reported up in the federal clearinghouse once we issue the report. Other reports that we assist the village in compiling is the Water Utility Public Service Commission Annual Report. That's a regulatory-based report. It's done on their system, and it just basically includes the financial information of the water utility, but also includes statistical information about gallons of, gallons used and processed through, number of customers, additions of plants, number of meters and things. And then the Department of Revenue Municipal Financial Report, that's due to the Department of Revenue each year, and they use that. It's a, again, a consolidation of all of the village's funds is reported in that, and they use that for state shared revenue calculations and transportation aid calculations. And then as I mentioned there, as part of what we issue, we issue a required audit communication packet or a set of letters. Those are pretty standard. I wouldn't say there's anything in our letter for the village's audit that is unusual or not like in previous years, or that stands out. It's pretty standard for all of our communication letters. And then I can hit on some of these key financial indicators on the following pages. But some of the things we'll look at is fund balance, budget to actual comparisons, and then a look at some of the revenue and expenditure trends in the funds. So page three, this is a look at the general fund, a condensed version of the general fund balance sheet, comparing 2023 to 2022, assets of cash, advanced tax collections, taxes receivable, some other assets. Then you have liabilities, deferred inflows, and fund balance. So essentially, what you look at when you're looking at a balance sheet in terms of the health of a general fund is you take a look at fund balance. Assets minus liabilities minus your deferred outflows, sorry, deferred inflows is your fund balance. Now, it's the village's policy each year to, it's a fund balance policy that the village follows to calculate any amount over 30% of next year's budget and transfer that to one of the capital projects funds or transfer it to other funds. So at the end of 2023, the general fund was able to transfer $340,000 to, I believe it was the capital replacement fund is where that went. So the excess funds over the fund balance policy were transferred to that fund for future use, still leaving that 30% fund balance mark within the general fund. And then the bottom of the page there, just a condensed version of the budget to actual comparison schedule, taking a look at what the final amended budget was for total revenue expenditures and other sources and uses compared to actual. So an increase in fund balance of just under $159,000 in the general fund. And then the following page, page four, gives you just a more detailed breakdown of what's included in the general fund fund balance at the end of the year. The different categories include non-spendable, which is primarily prepaid expenses, advances to other funds, so funds that are held up in non-spendable form, committed fund balance, and then assigned fund balance. But primarily, the general fund maintains their unassigned fund balance.
Do you want to comment on that?
Yeah, so when we used to print them, it was a nice book form. We'd print them out so that you'd have pages that were side by side, but it's not relevant in there. So page five, this just is a list of all of the other governmental funds that the village maintains, again, those self-balancing funds, and the ending fund balance at the end of 2022 and then the end of 2023 in each of those funds. Some of the larger activity in funds, the library fund, of course. There's a lot of funding going through there with building the new library, so that fund balance decreased significantly. Your equipment replacement fund carries a larger fund balance along with your street improvements, because that's where you're borrowing money for capital improvements and purchases. Page six and seven, take a look at the trend in the tax levy over the last five years. The green bar being the village's operating and debt levy, and then the smaller bars at the bottom being specific to the tax incremental districts and the increment that they generate on themselves.
Can I just say, for anyone watching at home, our population also increased by quite a bit during that time?
Right, right, so I bet if you were to...
By like 2,000 people.
Yeah, I bet if you were to look at the trend of population, to the trend of your tax levy, to the trend of your equalized value, which when you look at the debt as well, you know, they're all kind of in proportion with each other. Page seven is again, a look at a pie chart of the tax role. It's always good to see that, you know, each year, there's a tax that's levied, but there's a large portion that is the local school district, the county. Then you have the village's portion, the TIF district portions, and the tech colleges that the village is a part of, that makes up the tax levy as a whole. Oh, and there's one of those pages. So page eight, we'll take a look at this. So this is where I was saying that when you look at the trend in terms of debt trending up, the red line is your actual outstanding debt at the end of each year. And the blue line is based on equalized value. So the village can borrow up to 5% of the equalized value within the village. So that is the, your maximum, your capacity to borrow is that blue line. So in reality, your capacity, your equalized value is continuing to go up. Your debt is going up as well, but still not quite as sharp as your actual capacity to borrow. And then page nine and 10, this is a look at the water and sewer utilities, specifically a five-year trend of the operations, operating income, operating expenses, and the results each of those years, and then also a look at the utility cash flows. Some differing things that you'll see in financial statements of the water utility is, they're also on the full accrual basis of accounting. So it's the long-term assets, long-term liabilities are on the face of the balance sheet. And then your operating revenues and expenses on the income statement. So a large portion of the operating expenses in the water and sewer utility is depreciation expense, which is a non-cash expense, but it's the allocation of capital costs over an estimated useful life. So if you're borrowing, doing a project for a million dollars and it's a 10-year life, you take a million divided by 10 years, and that expense gets recorded each year over 10 years. So in the water utility, that's roughly $450,000 each year of the operating expenses. And in the sewer utility, it's roughly $750,000 of those operating expenses. So it's a significant portion, if you're looking at whether the utility has an operating income or loss, there is a significant portion that is that depreciation, non-cash outflow-type expense. And that's really evident when you look at, so for example, the water utility has a small operating loss after-tax equivalent in 2023, but has a much larger decrease in cash because of those capital outflow items. In one year, you may borrow debt for capital, so you'll have an increase in cash flow, but then in this next year, you'll have a decrease in cash flow.
Thank you, thank you for that clarification, because that had me really vexed looking at this yesterday, trying to understand how cash flow could be so positive against losses.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
And at the bottom there, I mean, the utilities do have a healthy cash balance at the end of the year. This is kind of an analysis of something bonding agencies, the PSC, looks at in terms of a percentage of cash to your operating expenses. But given the size of the village, the projects that are going on, the dollar value of future projects, that it's good to have those cash reserves, but they can get used up fairly quickly when you're talking about some of the large projects, so.
I will say, can I just interject here that we are trying to lower those cash balances by using that as part of the capital improvement plan, trying to defer borrowing where we can to utilize cash balances? That makes sense?
Yeah, and I'm guessing, you know, the village has worked with, Ellers, I believe, on rate studies, water and sewer rates, so I'm sure that's something that they, you know, incorporated into those rates is how much cash on hand do we want to use versus financing in those cash flow needs?
Correct.
And then the next few pages are just a five-year trend of, actually, this page here is just a bar graph of those water and sewer operating results over the last five years.
It looks terrible. I'm glad you were here to explain.
Yeah, yeah, depreciation is a large expense that is factored in there, yes.
I can rotate it.
Problem solved.
It's like that commercial a while ago.
So pages 11 and 12 are a look at the general fund expenditures over the last five years. It does include, we do include in this chart, the debt service, principal and interest repayment each year of general operating debt excluding debt in the TIF districts. That big blip in the middle is a year when there's either refunding or refinancing that happened. I can't remember exactly what that was in that year, but I know it was a question last year that got brought up. But it was either financing that got paid off in a balloon or refinanced.
I think that was the year that Gorman...
Or Gorman got paid off. Yeah, potentially, yeah. Otherwise, I mean, normal, large expenditure categories, public safety is usually one of the larger expenditure categories in a municipality this size. And pages 13 and 14, again, that same graph and pie chart view, but just a look at the general fund revenues, making up the different sources of revenue, taxes being the largest source, intergovernmental revenues, which is those state shared revenues, transportation aids, things like that, regulation and compliance, public charges for services, and then some miscellaneous revenues from time to time. So that was my, it's never as brief as I intended to be, but my brief overview, my apologies. If there's any specific questions, I can certainly go over anything.
Not seeing any, so.
Okay.
Yeah, do you go over the next part too, or is that...
That's essentially the full audit report itself, so.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so I don't see that we need to do anything with it. We go to next thing on the agenda here, okay. Thank you, very much.
Thank you.
So item 4B2 is Resolution Number 24-22, Amendment Number 3 to 2023 Budget to Account for Year-End Adjustments. Can I get a motion? I see Jason, and I saw Tom first. And then, this is just to accept what we just heard, basically?
Well, they're actually amendments to it.
These are...
Yeah, it's a...
Oh, documents, all right.
Yeah, it's to accept the audit and then to make a couple of year-end adjustments, including that transfer of general fund surplus that was mentioned before.
The details on page 159, if you're looking for it.
Yeah, way at the end of this, 159, okay. I'll skip way ahead.
It's up on this.
All right. All right, any comments or questions on that, or ready for vote? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. That was easy. Okay. Agenda number five here, approval of vouchers in the amount of $744,273.75. And can we get a motion on the table, then we can discuss. Carleen and Tim. All right, any questions? Okay, seeing none, all those in, oh, roll call, sorry, yeah.
All right, Bashan?
Yes.
Manke?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
And Kirchdorfer?
Yes.
Okay. Then number six is the consent agenda, items A through E, which is available online if anyone's watching at home. Can I get a motion for this? And then we can ask questions. So Jason and Tim. Any questions on these items? Wow.
I did have a question on the Liberty Park. While I was looking at, is that right? Yes, while I'm on...
It's not on the consent agenda, but I could talk about it when we get there.
Well, the reimbursement agreement, yep.
Yeah, is that page 179, is that part of consent agenda?
Yep, yeah, sorry.
Or 180, actually. So I'm looking at this, and it looks like the entrance to this is on CC. Is there also an exit onto Oregon Parks? There's just that one entrance exit for this, all of this?
At this point, yeah, no site plan's been approved or anything at this point. This was just their concept plan. But there is a pedestrian connection planned between Oregon Center Drive and the site. Oregon Center Drive is actually a private drive in that section, pretty much just past Omni, so.
I just thought it was a lot of, a lot of potential vehicles and only one. That's, I was just curious.
Yep, that's the plan, yeah, hasn't been reviewed by engineering or fire or anything at this point.
Thank you.
Just, it's not a question actually on the items, I'm just curious, is the Public Transportation Committee, is that fully volunteer, do we have sufficient staff for that now, or volunteers for that?
No, because we received a resignation from Aaron Sitzelsberger. So Michael is filling another seat. We are still just barely at Quorum. I mean, four, we'll have four people. So I guess Quorum is three under the rules we just made, so we have a tiny cushion again.
So you're still looking for more?
We are still looking, we are always looking for transportation committee members, thank you.
And in fact, had to cancel a meeting recently because none of the members could be there.
Yeah, again. Please, please, somebody.
I can move forward with anything.
It is.
Yeah, yeah.
There's a motion on the...
Yeah, so we have a motion and a second to accept the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, not seeing any opposed, so motion passes. Okay, item seven is reports of committees. Items are for discussion and/or possible action. 7A is plan commission, application for certified survey map submitted by Kismet Development LLC dividing Lot 6, Oregon Parks Neighborhood Duplex replat 257 Liberty Park Drive into two lots for the purpose of a zero-lot line duplex. Can I get a motion to get it on the table here? Jason and Carleen. What do we need to know?
So this is in the area that's near the North Point, CC Lane, construction going up, but several duplexes already built over here. This is one that is yet to be built, but it's a corner lot, so if you look at the plans, one driveway is facing Liberty Park Drive, one driveway will be facing Oregon Parks Avenue, but we do these all the time, the split for the duplexes. The banks prefer it this way for mortgages and things, separate, kind of units, separate parcels. So no comments here from engineering, so we're all wrapped up and recommending approval.
Okay, any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. 7B is Public Works and Utilities Committee, revision to the village mowing plan policies to create a process for requesting changes to the plan. I think we've seen this before, but do we...
Yep.
Oh, yeah, let's do, so Tim and then Carleen?
Sure.
Motion, okay. Any comments or questions? Carleen?
I just want to thank the residents of the village who came forward with some of their concerns and for their patience, and also to thank Jeff and the Public Works Department for listening to that and making adjustments and really kind of working through things so that we came up with a plan that I think will serve the community for a good long time. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. And 7C, Park Board, sponsorship guide for 2024. That was Leanne's. Should we do a motion first and then do it, or? Let's get a motion to approve, I see Tim and Tom. Okay, go ahead.
Sure, so I noticed a trend with neighboring communities where they had just one all-encompassing sponsorship guide for their events, their naming rights, whatever, what have you. So I decided to do the same. So it's, I kept it simple for the first year with just the event sponsorships as well as some of the remaining GC, Community Park sponsorships as well. And then hopefully, it will grow and grow as the years to come.
Thank you for putting that together, looks very nice.
You're welcome, thank you.
Yeah, I thought this was a great idea.
Thank you.
Carleen?
Is there an online component that people can, can, you know, I'm looking at the, actually, what Jeff has up there right now, I'm wondering if people can do this online, I'm just looking for that.
Eventually, eventually.
Okay.
I was just gonna go right on there, you know, and sponsor the... JCPark. The whole thing.
Okay, thanks for the comic relief.
She knows me well.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, all right. Number eight is unfinished business. Items are for discussion and/or possible action. 8A is applications for alcohol beverage license annual renewal for the July 1, 2024, to June 30 of 2025 license period. And there is a list in the packet. All right, Jason, make a motion. Can I get a second? Tim, awesome. All right. This seems pretty straightforward.
It's, it's an annual thing, and I just want to give a shout-out to Joy Hansen, the deputy clerk. She worked very hard with applicants this year. Because of the new laws, there was new forms, and it was lots of fun for that purpose. But it's pretty straightforward, and all is good, and she's done a very good job with it.
I would agree, and this is pretty straightforward. We do a lot of these kinds of things, this is really just housekeeping, so.
Yep.
We have the motion, so... We have the motion, so if there are any questions, any everybody good?
I just have one quick question. There was a citizen who came forward about the license held by, I'm losing the ziggy's, did they did they end up giving that up, or is that, I didn't, don't see them on the list?
Yep, they are not on the renewal list, so their license will expire this year.
Okay, great.
On June thirtieth of twenty-three.
Cool, thank you.
Twenty-four, we're in twenty-four, yeah, yeah.
So I actually have a technical question based on that, so a license is not necessarily connected with an owner, it's connected with a facility?
It it can be an individual, in this particular case, it's an LLC, so the license belongs to either an applicant or an LLC or a corporation, it does not belong to the location.
Okay.
They have to register the location in their application.
They have to have a premise, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. And then we are to eight B, letter of agreement with Mueller Communications for communication services related to a possible referendum to exceed property tax levy limits, so this Martin thing.
Do you want to motion at all?
Oh, yeah, let's, Tim and Tom.
I don't have anything to add, this was, we talked about this last week, as far as the scope of what we're getting into with Mueller, and this is just the agreement to approve that scope.
I had a question, they said that the, they have a phase one and phase two, and it's all broken up here, but phase three would be the actual education part if we decide we're moving forward. They have something on here as a as a budget, but I don't know if that's a budget for part three, or is that just kind of like for all of it, I'm, I mean.
Yeah, the, if we if we decide we don't want to move forward, then we wouldn't be moving forward with the cost of that phase.
But that is, that is that, in the bottom, the phase three budget is what phase three would cost?
Yes, yes.
That's not how much we've budgeted, that's what they're saying it would likely cost, okay.
Correct, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they're they're only going to charge us for the work we actually proceed with, so it'll be kind of after the fact, so if we end up not moving ahead and doing phase three, then we just don't get charged for that.
Okay. All right, any other questions? Carleen.
I don't have a question, I have a comment. So I sent to all the board members, and I just want folks in the listening or watching audience, and can I hold up your paper, because I sent it?
Well, you got this one too.
Okay.
This is from the front page.
So there are two articles that were in the State Journal this weekend, one about municipalities like ours, and Oregon is mentioned in it, about municipalities asking voters to raise their taxes and what that's all about, and also one about the partisan gridlock that is putting our communities in a lurch related to shared revenue and held funds for lots of different things, including PFAS and other things, so I just, we don't want to be doing this, would not be our choice, there are other ways that this could be resolved, but they're not working right now. That's my comment.
I I would add to that, that I thought the, especially the, on the, the front page article on the municipalities, I thought that was especially well-written and very clear, appreciate the market comments that were included in there, I thought that they stated the case very well, and I think it's it's something that we ought to reference going forward.
Absolutely. Okay, anything else? Okay, well, we have a a motion and a second for approving this letter of agreement, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. So number nine, new business, items are for discussion and/or possible action, we have ordinance number twenty-four oh eight, an ordinance amending chapter thirteen of the Village of Oregon Code of Ordinances relating to wastewater permits for significant industrial users. Can I get a motion? Carleen and Tom, and Jeff, take it away. Right? Where's this Martin thing?
Yeah, I mean, this is, obviously, I think we've seen this a couple times before, and, you know, this is one of those things that we've recognized that we need to be addressing these SIUs, which luckily for the village, we don't have a lot of what we call industrial discharge units, you know, in in the village, you know, the, we have one or two significant ones, but this just allows us to be able to label that as such, and then also to be doing the monetary and possible pre-treatment requirements and a fair allocation of costs if additional treatment is necessary. And I know this is just an extension right now, obviously, as these things take time to go through, the, I think the old deadline was on or before July first twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, which is only two weeks away or three weeks away, this just extends it to April first twenty twenty-five, allowing us to kind of work with these few discharge entities, and just to be able to get them online with everything.
If, as I read this correctly, there's only one SIU, a significant industrial user identified at this time?
Right now, yes, yes, yeah. Primary.
Are there any concerns that what they're putting into the sewer system represents a threat and waiting?
No.
Be dangerous, or?
No, no, it, yeah, it's nothing like, I mean, if it were anything like that, we would obviously be, you know, having them halt immediately and everything like that. No, this is just, this follows kind of a, last couple of years, maybe the last five years, we've been watching a spike of some stuff that was coming through the plant, and we've isolated that, and now we're just working with them on how how that needs to be treated. But it's not caused, it just, anything that you change, you know, when you have a wastewater plant like ours, you don't want spikes in concentration because you're you're planning all your chemical dosing and everything and your irrigation and all that based off of kind of a fairly uniform profile coming into the plant, but, yeah, no, this hasn't caused any any public concern or anything.
It's more of a cost management issue than a environmental issue.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would be a good way to summarize it.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Let's see, then we're on to ten, which is reports of village officers, department heads, and consultants, this is informational only, no action by the village board will be taken, the reports are all in the meeting packet. Ten A, village administrator report, nothing, no comments, any questions? Okay, ten B is the director of public works report about future Highway fourteen WIS DOT maintenance work. Any questions on that? Okay, ten C, director of community development report, an update on the Dane County regional housing strategy, any comments on that?
Sure, so I shared this with the planning commission at our meeting earlier this month, and wanted to share it with you all too, obviously, this is just the executive summary for the regional housing strategy that Dane County planning kind of headed up, it's been about a year and a half process, a lot of meetings, I know Jenna attended a couple of the kickoff meetings, John Beno too, from our planning commission did as well, the meetings unfortunately were the same night as our planning commission meeting, so I was not able to attend to, but I've stayed up to date with some of the progress, and it's just been a good opportunity, I think, for a lot of partners, nonprofits, citizens, municipalities kind of come together and share notes and see where we're at, so this is, the full report is on their website, a lot of good data behind that as well, and I know the planning commission wanted some time to kind of read that on their website and digest a little bit, but probably August or September, I think, we'll have a discussion at the planning commission level, just reviewing this, and then if they'd like, Olivia Perry, who's the county's housing planner, may, I may invite her in to kind of do a presentation and summary at a planning commission meeting later this year, so I'll keep you all posted if we plan on doing that, but I wanted to at least get this in front of you, let you know that it's been wrapped up and is up on their website if you'd like to read through it further.
Any questions on this?
No, but I would like to make a comment about something, so I attended, I don't know if any of you did, because I couldn't see who the non-panelists were, but I attended the, the, something by the Regional Planning Commission or Regional Housing Network that Elise presented in on Thursday about the use of TIF extension funds in affordable housing, was very interesting, a lot of things going on around the county that were, that, I don't know about you, I mean, if we had one more of you, maybe we could pursue some of them, because they, there were a lot of really interesting programs in Wanakee and in some prairie in particular that were more outreach for folks who need affordable housing, and Elise presented on, you know, what what we've been able to do here in the village, and I've thought it was very informative, and I appreciate you being there.
Thanks for being there.
I was there too, and I also thought that, that I I didn't know you could do some of those things with that TIF money, that when you, when you close a TIF, you know, you can keep it open a couple extra years to, or one year, whatever, to get money for affordable housing, and that, that really kind of opened my eyes to more possibilities, so I thought that was great. Also, I was at the event where they unveiled this, this plan that we're reading about in the packet, and there were so many people that showed up, they almost, they were going to run out of food, people had to run out, like, they just had light snacks there, but they had to go out and quick get more food because they packed the room, it was at the Alliant Energy Center, and it was, it was big, so there's a lot of excitement and good things going on for affordable housing, it's good. Okay, it turns like, like Phil's gonna like, you know, yurt back to you, Phil, and there's nobody there, it's me, okay.
Did I just look at you?
Yeah, he just looked at me like.
It's you. Number eleven.
Yes, so thank you, so eleven is announcements and miscellaneous business, eleven A is announcements, comments, communications, upcoming meetings and events and miscellaneous business, village board members may provide brief statements, but no discussion or action of the body shall occur, we have Habitat for Humanity, Home Dedication, and Open House on Tuesday, June twenty-fifth at four thirty PM at seven fifty-one Janesville Street. That is, I'm just gonna address a little confusion we had before, that has been noticed, that is one event, there's also going to be an additional event on Monday, and that is the the bigger event, Tuesday is an invitation-only event, Mon, that's, oh.
Reverse that. Monday's the, Monday's the invite-only event for people who are involved in the.
Oh. They came in the mail.
Okay.
Yep, in the, kind of planning, and I think four members and a couple staff got invited, and then Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, is the public event.
Okay.
One that's in your packet probably.
Okay, I, I, that's not, well, we'll, we'll straighten it out later, there's two events, and we'll figure it out.
And I've let Candy know, so you guys can attend if you like, we'll notice both of them, I think they're both at four thirty, Monday and Tuesday, the last week.
The twenty-fifth is the one that's in the packet.
Yeah, I got an email that told me it was that way, so we're gonna have to straighten that out, we'll, we'll figure it out.
Can I just ask Jeff, and that, we, the meeting is changed, the public works meeting that wasn't going to be on the twenty-fifth?
Yeah, July second.
Has changed, okay.
Okay.
I do have some other comments, so last, I'm not sure to date out the arts, we had the Arts Festival, and at the arts, first off, it was a great event, I would, you know, send my compliments to the Arts Committee, I thought it was well-attended in spite of rain, one thing, I, we'd had the outreach table, and I thought that was well-attended, and we had actually a lot of people stop by, limited all the materials there, and we had a lot of good discussions, right next to our table was the survey group for the downtown planning group, they kicked off their initial interaction, we're gathering people with a QR code to go to a survey to respond to input, one thing I would note is that I tried to find that survey afterwards without the QR code, and there was nothing on our village site, and there was nothing that I could reference to it, and it just came up in another meeting where I was talking about the, that we had kicked off the downtown planning, and someone said, well, how can I respond to that survey, and I was suddenly short on how they would actually do so, so hopefully we can get that out and share it in the community, you know, relatively soon.
Okay, I can add to that, I just got the the social media kind of photo that we can share with the QR code, we also have a paper copy of the survey too, we'll make sure that's at the senior center and other public buildings for people to fill out, but just got that on Thursday last week, so I'm just unvarying myself, but I'll get there and get that to Candy hopefully tomorrow.
I have a list of people I have to send it to.
Sounds good, let's see, yeah, I think it's open until July nineteenth, something like that, so we have a little bit of time to fill it out.
And we'll get it out through e-notify and everything as well.
Everybody on the council, on the aging executive committee wanted to respond.
I'm sure they did, we'd love to hear from them, yep.
It's it's drawing a lot of interest, I will, I will tell you that.
Yeah, I think they did a good job with our fair too, drawing people in, and they'll be at the community band concert tomorrow night and Ice Cream Social, so they'll be kind of engaging people mostly before the the band concert, so more in the six to seven PM hour, look for them there too.
Tim, I had a comment.
Yeah, I just want to say congratulations to the Oregon High School girls soccer team, won state yesterday, one to nothing, so second championship, state championship in three years, so good job.
Also, kudos to Lisa for the excellent financial audit results, good job. Anything else? Okay, then we'll move on, eleven B is future agenda items, anybody have anything for future? Okay, crickets, love it. Then item twelve is adjournment, can I, Jason and Carleen, and all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay, we're adjourned.